We'll stand in session. Roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Durham.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimrus.
Here.
Mr. Kazachik.
Here.
Mayor Omero.
Item. Here. Item two.
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Rabbi Tamaz Luchaim, Luchaim, from congregation or shardosh. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Once two disputants came before Rabbi Ezekiel Landau, both claimed ownership to a tract of land. After listening to their arguments, Ezekiel Landau said, "Take me to the land." They took him to the disputed land. He said, "Let the earth itself render judgment," and to the amazement of the two disputants, he placed his ear to the ground and listened. After a few moments, he stood up and announced, "The earth has rendered its decision. I belong to neither of you, but both of you belong to me." With joyous spirits, we entered this city council chamber this evening, oh God, to offer unto you the gratitude of our hearts for the blessings of health and prosperity which you have showered upon us. You've enriched our earth, and we're aware that the fair and just distribution of the contributions of the earth are regarded as coming forth from your divine will. We do not possess this earth. We can only be your partners and stewards in determining how many can be blessed by your bounty. May the blessings of wisdom and understanding embrace our mayor and this council as she officially presides over her first council meeting. May this council manifest their gratefulness by cheerfully extending the blessings which we enjoy in such full measure unto those who suffer want, unto the sick, and unto the helpless. Help guide this council, oh God, in their deliberations to continue to endeavor to establish justice, equity, and an equal opportunity for all, so that injustice and poverty may be banished forever, and let us say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Item two D.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 395 dated December 3rd is received into and made part of the record. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Alrighty, item three. Item three.
Mayor and council reports. Summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 396 dated December 3rd is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events or activities within the community, not position statements or policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Cunningham, or Vice Mayor Cunningham.
First of all, without stating the obvious, Your Honor, I wanted just to welcome you in the mayor's spot.
Thank you.
It's a long time coming. We're all very proud of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
So the second piece is, and these are, one of these is a little tough. This one hurt a little. I want to extend my condolences to the family of Judith Blair. I've gotten to know her over the last five, I've gotten to know her over the last, probably about 10 years. And she was a very special lady in this community. Some of the contributions she made the first time I met her, she told me that there was, that I was going to be in a fashion show for the Salvation Army, and what she did was she had this fashion show she organized where you'd wear an old suit, and you'd like walk out and model and everything, and then you'd donate it to the Salvation Army so someone could use it for a job interview or whatever. She, she won multiple gold medals for swimming in the senior Olympics, but the most, the biggest thing that I probably admired about her was the commitment to her family and her faith. I talked to her about, two weeks ago, she was in chemotherapy, and she, she called me to tell me that I needed to work on parking downtown. Sorry, Steve. And, um, she said, "No, I'm fine." And, um, I just, I just wanted to offer my condolences. We lost someone who had a major impact on this community, and all the things that make up the story of her life makes her someone who I admire very much. So I wanted to talk, to say that. The second thing I wanted to do was to congratulate the University of Arizona Women's Basketball Team. Because for the first time in about 20 years, they're in the top 20, and it's well deserved, and we're not just a men's basketball town, we're a women's basketball town. And that's, means a lot, because it just kind of all makes sense, if you know what I mean. So, hooray for the Coach Barnes and the Wildcats, and again, sentiments go out to the family. So, thank you.
Any others? Councilmember Fumrus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate the individuals and businesses that were recognized by the Tucson Bank Chamber of Commerce for their work bettering our community. I also want to thank the 40 under 40 that were selected also yesterday in their breakfast kickoff, and thank them for their work that they're doing to improve the quality of life for all our citizens in our great city. On Saturday, November 23rd, Arizona Bilingual and Tucson Clinical Medical Familia held their annual Thanksgiving turkey giveaway at the Frye Shopping Center on 16th Avenue. I want to congratulate Alma Gallardo and the entire team of Arizona Bilingual and Tucson Clinical Medical Familia for their work to help our community with events. I also want to thank the other businesses and the organizations who also had booths at the event offering help and services to those in need. On Friday, November 29th, I had the privilege of attending the Sugar Hill Day after Thanksgiving reunion at the Donna Ligon Center. This marked the 12th consecutive year for this event. I read the city proclamation from Mayor Rothow that he issued. I want to thank the organizers for inviting me and helping me to congratulate them on a successful event. Also on Saturday, November 30th, councilmember Paul Durham, councilmember-elect Nikki Lee, South Tucson councilmember Akina Ogobola and their family joined me and my staff and my family members to take part in the 25th Annual Parade of Lights. I want to thank them for taking part and to thank everyone who turned out for this parade. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You have one.
Councilmember Kazachik.
Join Paul in expressing condolences to the Blair family. It was almost about a year ago to the day that she stood out there and exhorted all of us to come and support the women's basketball program, gender equity and all that, and last Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, they had over 4,000 people for a home game, and so that was really cool. So she really paved the way for that. One other, though, loss. Our condolences go out to Sarah Garrett Gasson and her family. Tim Gasson was her husband. He was the voice of U of A ice hockey, and he unexpectedly passed away over the weekend, and it's just a terrible loss for her and her family and for the community, so I want to pass that on as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Kazachik, and I too want to add my condolences to to Sarah Gasson and her family, and to the Blair family for their losses. Very difficult time to lose family, and any time is, but as we, as we walk into the holidays, this is a very, very important time of the year for many of the families, and so I express my condolences for the loss to the Gasson family and to the Blair family. With that, I'd like to move to item four.
City managers' report. Summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 397 dated December 3rd is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
No report, Mayor.
Alrighty, item five.
Liquor license applications. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 398 dated December 3rd is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have one request for a new license. Under item 5C, we have two requests for special events. Staff has indicated that the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. However, item 5B1 does have written argument in opposition file, so that item will be considered separately. An appropriate motion would be to approve items C1 through 2 and send to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to forward the liquor license to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Your Honor, item 5B1 has written opposition filed against it. That's located in Ward 1.
Councilmember Santa Cruz.
I wanted to see if anybody from the East Lasne Market is here in the audience. Is anybody in opposition to the liquor license in the audience? So with that, this being my first day here, not having all the information that I would like to be for or against, I do a no recommendation at this time.
So you move no recommendation?
I move no recommendation.
Sir.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed. So this motion carries six to one. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue, except for those items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you have read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last 30 minutes. Pursuant to Arizona Open Meeting law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by the speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take any legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? And I have a list here. I will take them in order of received for today. I'd like to ask Ms. Shannon Riggs, representing the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition, to come up. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and congratulations to our newly elected mayor and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition is composed of neighborhoods, business owners, local first Arizona, and concerned citizens. Our mission is to preserve the unique identity of Fourth Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods. I'm one of the owners of Pop Cycle on Fourth Avenue, and right now we should be concentrating on our business since we make most of our sales for the year in December. Instead, I'm here to address this new council concerning transparency and community involvement. I and other members of the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition have spent hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars working to defend our city's most vital shopping and living district against rampant development. We've had to educate ourselves from the ground up about zoning overlays and G-plates, and yet after our hard work, we have still been met with apathy and resistance from some city staff. The planning and design review process is extremely hard to navigate and non-transparent to the average citizen. I've spent time recently in neighborhood meetings listening to angry and disappointed residents who can't understand why the plans for an actual project look so very different from what they were shown when the pad was being developed. They ask why they even wasted their time taking meetings with partners on Fourth or writing letters saying they didn't oppose the pad. They thought they were getting condos. It's looking more like student housing. They were told there would be one-to-one parking for residential. That was wiped away with a minor amendment behind closed doors. Parking garage exiting on Eighth Street, not anymore. This was guaranteed to the neighborhood. At this moment, we feel the future of Fourth Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods is uncertain. Recently, a business in the block where the union is being built closed its doors. The owner blamed the construction and Fourth Avenue in general for the closing. Many businesses on the avenue are feeling the squeeze. We spend hours of time on social media and tons of advertising dollars in our business just to attract people to the avenue. We've heard that the G-plate process is going to become more transparent and require more of developers. Unfortunately, by the time this happens, it may be too late for Fourth Avenue. Letting the G-plate for Opus go forward without a community benefits agreement could be the beginning of the end for the avenue as we know it. This company steamrolled the council, their design review committee, and the neighborhoods. They got everything, and the community got no guarantees. Haven't heard back from any of you in reaction to the Opus response to our short negotiation. They refused to even agree to items that cost nothing, such as regular meetings with management. I sincerely hope that the debacle of that situation will motivate this new administration to create open dialogue between current residents and builders who want entitlements. This includes proper notice and opportunities to engage before any incentives are given. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shannon. Mr. Manager, this item was previously discussed as mayor and council. Are there any City of Tucson staff that worked, that was the direction that mayor and council gave at that time, that worked with Opus and HVAC on this issue, on this particular community benefits agreement?
Honorable Mayor, we are working through that now, and I can provide a written report to the council on.
Can you do that, please? Make sure that HVAC is also part of that report. Thank you. Paul Parisi, representing For Tucson.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Paul Parisi. I'm with a nonprofit organization called For Tucson, and we seek biblical solutions for city problems. And I'm happy to say I'm not here to fix any problems because you're doing a wonderful job. And Madam Mayor, first I want to congratulate you for being our first Latina mayor, and I think God's prepared you for this job. And councilmembers Lane Santa Cruz and Nikki Lee, I don't want to thank you for, or congratulate you for winning, but for being so bold and courageous to serve like the other members of the council who've been serving for all these years. And I know that you're And I know that your tenure is going to be just like theirs. Every year, For Tucson puts out on a spectacular event, and we call it "The Reception and Blessing for Elected Officials and First Responders." This is our seventh year we've done this event, and we've only been in business eight years, so we started right at the beginning. We do this every year to honor you as elected officials and to honor our first responders who serve and protect us. And people ask, "Why do we put it together as one event?" And it's that we feel the most important thing that government can do is safety, protect people. And the police and firefighters are the people you choose to put their lives on the line every day. It gives us a chance to bless and honor you, and also for all of us together to bless and honor our first responders. It's a well-attended event. It's going to be January 3rd, 2020, 7:00 at the Vicount Suites Hotel. Councilmember Fimbres is already registered. I've given the clerk formal invitations for every one of you to attend, and you're my personal guest. All you have to do is have somebody send an email to me, and I'll have you on the list. There are many elected officials have already registered for this event. It's totally nonpartisan. I know Mayor Rothschild has gone to practically everyone. Richard Fimbres has too. Paul Cunningham and Paul Durham also. So I'd love you to all come as my personal guests, and we can work together for the rest of the year to solving the problems. Thank you very much.
Dennis Mullen, representing Public Partnership.
Mullen. Dennis Mullen.
Mullen.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Mullen. I'm a retired CPA. Been in the CPA business since the mid-'60s. I live in Tucson, and my subject matter is fighting local poverty. Public Partnership helps low-income and at-risk Arizonans, many of them children or homeless, get Arizona free money that's waiting for them, compliments of the State of Arizona's Treasury, Constitution, and statutes. People say there's no such thing as free money. That's wrong. Arizona statutes and the Constitution provide money to low-income and people in poverty who voluntarily apply for it. Arizona has the 42nd highest poverty rate in the nation, and Tucson itself has 25% of its residents in poverty. Of its 535 residents, that's every fourth person, living in poverty. And what's the poverty rate? It shows right here. $1,000 a month for one person is poverty. $2,000 a month for a family of four is poverty. That poverty rate of 25% is up 40% from what it was in 2007. In 2007, it was 18%. According to the City of Tucson's Poverty and Urban Stress 2012, at that time, two of Tucson's wards had poverty rates over 30%, two of them over 20%, and two of them about 10%. So where is Arizona, everybody going to get $100? And where's the $13 million going to come from? Very simply, the State of Arizona's Treasury. Public Partnership has an Arizona Free Money Program, and what that does, it helps low-income people get annual money from the State of Arizona's Treasury. $25 to $100 if you file one form, $527 to $602 if you file another form, completely voluntarily. You are not required to do that. Oh, by the way, the State of Arizona's Department of Arizona Treasury, Department of Arizona Revenue refuses to educate Arizonans about this law, these two laws specifically, and other parts of the Constitution that provide money to low-income people in poverty, elderly people, and disabled. So, got 20 minutes. So besides that, United Way refuses to educate people about these programs as well. They've told me they're not interested. They're only interested in educating people, helping people fill out tax returns. April 15th, that's it. They close shop. Poor people live forever. They don't close shop at April 15th. Thank you very much. One quick thing. I'd like the City of Tucson to consider how they're going to fight poverty in its general plan and every day. Thank you. Good day.
Thank you so much. Stefan Rankas, representing Self.
Good evening, Mayor, new mayor, Ms. Romero, and members of the council. My name is Stefan Rankas, and I'm representing myself. I live in Tucson. Just got a few things I want to address. With the new alignment of the council personnel and the newly-elected mayor and Representatives Lana Santa Cruz and Nikki Lee, there is an observation of change in the City of Tucson, promising, yet there are several existing issues that exist. With the possible recent elections, the voters have also voiced their opposition to Tucson becoming a sanctuary city. The challenge set forth to this governing council, governing board, is to adhere to the citizens' wishes. Funds allocated should be towards the various infrastructure improvements benefiting all residents who reside in the old peublo. One example, improving residential roadways, okay? Not the high visible of major route systems like Speedway, Broadway, Wilmont, Craycroft. Each ward has residential roadways in severe deterioration, okay? Another recent discussion I heard over this study session this past, this evening, was on EA electronic scooters. And while Councilmember Kazachek brought us some various violation on his visual scale slide presentation, I have a couple of suggestions to offer on that matter. While Tucson is not alone in e-scooter razor or bird usage, I've seen in cities across the country, even during my visit in New York City, the power program still in effect recommend that, as Councilmember Durham mentioned about tracker sensitivity, possibly detect the surface distinction of roadway and sidewalk, thus stalling the unit. Second, just like the two-go bikes have set locations, possibly as an alignment with the scooters, to have that as a drop-off point, not a sole drop-off point, but a possible drop-off point for the scooters, okay? And also, realize that violations for wheels, automobiles, if you have a traffic or moving violation, sometimes your privileges get revoked, or you get fined, cited. Also bicycles, if they don't adhere to motor vehicle laws, they get penalized repercussionally, you know, violations. Possibly with the e-scooters, they could be revoking of their access privileges since their name is attached to the thing as well. And again, again, thank you, and have a pleasant transition into the new year.
Thank you so much, Stefan. Joe Audino, representing Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition?
Hi there. I am Joe Audino. I'm the vice chair of the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition. Thank you for letting me speak, mayor and council. I will reiterate the welcome and congratulations to those of you who are up there, and to Mayor Romero moving to the big chair. But I'll try not to cover any other ground that Shannon, our chair, already did. I'm here to reaffirm our commitment and to resolutely rededicate our coalition to advocating for Tucson as a whole and for our communities, including Fourth Avenue, whose singular culture exemplifies so much of what's great about Tucson. I intended to echo some of the words of Scott Egan from Barrio Hollywood and the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition in a letter that he wrote to you all yesterday, and agree with him that we need to reconsider what our city is incentivizing. We know this isn't just a local problem, with things like opportunity zones and state programs, and at our local level approving of things like G-plates that we've talked about. But we need to consider whether we're incentivizing and subsidizing out-of-state developers who are just here to use our land and resources, or whether we can use those resources to improve affordability, sustainability, and quality of life for Tussanians. We think it's time for the residents' voices to speak louder than the developer dollars. We need to reanalyze what Tucson is today. And I'll echo here the sentiments of the rabbi in our invocation. Who is Tucson for? Via our actions, the Tucson that is being built right now will be the Tucson of the future. And who is it for? Long after the bonuses go to the CEOs and vice presidents of Opus and Gray Star, long after the property owners have flipped the properties and made the profits and made the money, what's going to be left for the residents of Tucson, the other 99% of us? And I fear, I fear that it won't be much, but I do know that what will be left is what we fight for, and not a brick or soul more. And that's why we ask you not just for representation, not just for conversation, not just for an ear, but we need people to stand with us. We don't even need you to be in front of us. We don't need you to have our back. Just stand with us for the fight for the next couple of years, all right? Thank you.
Vanna Lewis, representing Tohono O'Tumlan's.
Good evening to you all. Thank you for giving me the privilege and the honor to speak on my behalf of Indigenous lands from Tohono O'Tumlan Nation. My name is Vanna Lewis. I do come here today with multiple representations, but the main thing is my homeland. As a member of the tribe of the Tohono O'Tumlan Nation, I see major change in our city that the man in the maze can only go so far. So I'm here as a representative in solidarity with coalitions like Fourth Avenue that are taking away the diversity and the integrity of what this land is really built on. And as far as I know, in our culture, we say that our region goes from mountain range to mountain range, and that is our nation as O'Tum people. Obviously, it's well aware that Tucson is occupied, and my reservation is three hours away from here, is also known as Gonsei Chuchadik. I'm from the Hickowan District. And being here in Tucson and raised here, I understand how we're all connected and how the water connects us. So my reason in being here is to say thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. I look forward to knowing each and every one of you personally and to be able to welcome new members that are here. I'm new to the game, but I'm also very aware that the future lies within all of us, and what I bring to the table is worthy enough to stand in front of you all today and to recognize each and every one of your humanity, that we're all tied together. What we call shudak is what is water, and water is life. And I was also to mention that I was a part of the resistance in Standing Rock, North Dakota, and coming back here to be able to still bring that same resistance of protecting our water and understanding where our aquifers are at and the natural resources of water in the desert. Therefore, representing the land, my nation, where I'm from, and also all of us in our humanity here today, I don't have quite a demand. I ask of a really huge request that our issues within our capacity here in Tucson and council of how we are going to approach a Clean New Deal or a Green New Deal about effective energy and the crisis that we're at with climate change and the climate itself here in Tucson, and what we can do on behalf of this global issue and taking matters into our own hands. So if anything, I welcome you, I challenge you, and I thank you, I appreciate you. I send you with a blessing of warmth and of family and appreciation in your homes, and that there's no violence either within you or externally, and that we can all come together to work on this matter. And I do ask that you challenge yourselves as far as how much energy you're using, your footprint on the earth, what plastic you're using, are you recycling? What are you doing to make sure that personally you're taking care of the issue? Thank you.
Maria Vores, representing Mountain View Neighborhood, regarding new development.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Maria Vores. As you said, I'm here representing Mountain View Neighborhood and some fellow Mountain View Neighborhood people over there. In good faith, we have pursued every avenue available to ensure a proposed development in the heart of our neighborhood, conformed to existing Unified Development Code and the specific requirements of flexible lot development and the applicable Northside Area Plan. Despite our efforts over the past 19 months, the tentative plat for Mountain Enclave subdivision as approved contains inconsistent treatment of design elements which results in violation of the current UDC. Inconsistencies include calculation of functional open space, which is the basis for maximum density under FLD, no privacy mitigation for existing neighbors, and an inaccurate native plant preservation plan and inventory. At the October 10th call to audience, I spoke in particular of Planning and Development's dismissal of privacy mitigation requirements for flexible lot developments if a common area within the development of no minimum dimensions is between the new two-story residences and existing adjacent single-story residences. At that time, I requested a meeting with specific stakeholders. Planning and Development Services, along with Ward 3, scheduled a meeting on November 14th during which Mountain View Neighbors presented these concerns. As a result, Planning and Development Services committed to answering, one, how 61% of the functional open space fails to conform to current UDC requirements, yet was reviewed and approved by PDSD, and, two, to reveal the city-developed strategy for native plant inventory that the landscape architect referred to at that meeting. All of the inventoried 148 native mesquite trees were deemed non-viable until some were found to be outside of the property line. Our answers have not yet been answered, and the neighborhood was not assured privacy from two-story homes with reduced setbacks facing into adjacent properties. Finding no other remedy to the non-conforming elements of the development, we request assistance from mayor and council. With the subdivision tentative plat approved and the final plat on the upcoming agenda, time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This item is in Ward 3. I believe that Ward 3 is working with Planning and Development Services on this issue.
Yeah, and Councilmember Kazachek was present at the meeting, too.
And Mayor, the item is on a future agenda to consider the approval of the final plat, so information from staff will be provided as part of that agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Can you also include the information that you and I have shared with regard to the basis on which we are prevented from comment, from taking a motion on final plats or tentative plats?
Yes.
And staff, I believe, and it was at the meeting, still owes the neighborhood answers to how the definition of functional open space, as is included in the UDC, did not conform with SFLD or the neighborhood plan, the discussion about trees viability, transplantability, and the discussion about how a 10-foot landscape buffer can constitute privacy mitigation for an adjacency.
That's right.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Item 7?
Consider agenda items A through J.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, in this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is grants, grant and aid agreement with the Tohono O'Tumlan Nation for various projects. Item C is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the collection and disposal of gasoline-powered lawn and garden equipment. Item D is a pre-annexation and development agreement with CFL1 LLC and Jason Stewart, owners of multiple parcels for water service. This item will be considered separately at the request of Councilmember Vice Mayor Cunningham. Item E is a final plat, S15061, Snazzy Sax Properties, lots 1 and 2. Item F is a final plat, S19035, Sueno Hermosa, lots 1 through 6, and Common Areas A and B. Item G is a final plat, S19045, Kennedy and Mayer Town Homes, lots 1 through 13, and Common Area A. Item H is a real property vacation- Item H is a real property vacation and sale of surplus Alley Right of Way, South of Broadway Boulevard between Tindal and Park Avenues. Item I is Parks and Recreation Improvement and Maintenance Agreement with the Salvador Initiative LLC for the Garden of Gethsemane. This item was continued from the meeting of November 19th, 2019. Item J is a memorial calling for an end to the federal government's current migrant protection protocols, urging the federal government to resume the transportation of asylum-seeking families to Tucson shelters and to release humanitarian aid to Tucson and Pima County. This item will be considered separately at the request of Councilmember Kozaczek. That's the extent of the consent agenda. Your Honor, an appropriate motion would be to approve items A through J with the exceptions of D and J.
May I have a motion, please? There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek. Mayor Romero.
Aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0.
Your Honor, the first item to be considered separately was item D that was called by Vice Mayor Cunningham.
Vice Mayor?
Your Honor, I don't have any -- let me rephrase. I have concerns with this item, but not from a 100,000-point view. I'm not -- I'm totally prepared to vote for this item tonight, but I want to talk about, while we have this opportunity, the philosophy of our pre-annexation agreements. One of the things that -- we've been doing these for a minute, and they were a good idea at the time, especially if you're pro-annexation, but as we continue to go forward, it's starting to dawn on me, based on some of the discussion that's been in the periphery about Tucson, where developments are starting to come up in which they have to dig wells for their own water, while if you build in the service area, you are guaranteed -- you have a much better guaranteed water supply. So you're actually getting value for that. But Tucson isn't necessarily getting value for that. We're getting a pre-annexation agreement that someday, if maybe, your parcels connect. But what happens when those areas incorporate themselves? We're basically getting nothing to promise water forever and ever. So I want to know, I want to just like put the bug in the air that as these come up, maybe we should take a look at our fee structure and take a look at what we're allowed to do, because I don't think we're getting all the value that we deserve. Other than that, I'd like to move the item.
There's a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call? Okay, let's vote. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All righty, let's consider then item J. Councilmember Kozaczek.
Thank you. This is an item that the mayor and I worked on together, this memorial by which this body is going to speak in opposition to what the administration calls a migrant protection protocol. It's poorly named because there's nothing in the process that is protective of the people who are being subjected to this. The bishop yesterday wrote an opinion piece on it, and one of the sentences in it says, "The migrant protection protocol is a policy that does not provide protection to these most vulnerable people and, in fact, has placed them in significant danger in cities that cannot adequately assist them." The opposite of that is this city that has been, for the last five years, helping over 35,000 migrants through this community, originally through the Project Mariposa program, more recently at the Benedictine Monastery, and now at the county Casalitas Welcome Center. For this administration to suggest keeping people in cities that we have travel warnings for our own citizens to avoid, and that is called protection, is unconscionable, and I would hope that the rest of this council would join in opposing this inappropriately-named protocol. Those of us close to the movement are calling it the Remain in Mexico Protocol.
And I wanted to also add commentary to this because as my first council meeting as the mayor of the city of Tucson, both Councilmember Kozaczek and I wanted to make sure that we made a statement as to how this particular council feels in terms of the inhumane policies coming from the federal government and most specifically the Trump administration. There exists more than adequate space here in Tucson for nonprofit shelters to accommodate every person that is arriving to Tucson. Local nonprofits, as Councilmember Kozaczek has mentioned, have been providing a safe place to stay, food, travel support, flu shots, clothing. And we feel it is inhumane to, in a place like Tucson that has a history of being an immigrant-welcoming community, we feel that it is inhumane to send people back when there are nonprofits at the ready to help. And so I would like to invite additional commentary by Dinah Bear that would want to include any additional commentary. Dinah, if you'd like to come in, you have about three minutes to make your commentary. Dinah has worked for immigrant rights in the Tucson community and throughout the country for many, many years, and so Dinah, please add your voice.
Thank you. And thank you, council, and Kozaczek and Mayor Romero for introducing this resolution in a very speedy manner in response to this very cruel policy. The Remain in Mexico or the migrant unprotection protocol is inherently wrong, immoral, and I think will be found by courts most probably to be illegal. And that would be true anywhere in the country, but as both of you have already indicated, it is particularly egregious in the city of Tucson. Tucson is not the only community on the border or in the internal United States that has welcomed migrants and refugees, but it certainly, I think, has set the gold standard and did so very early in 2014 when refugees seeking asylum began showing up at the bus station, and Casa Mariposa took notice, and then the community took notice, and both the public and private sectors of the city have performed magnificently to welcome these people, assure their safety, and do so in a way that does no harm whatsoever to the interests of Tucson citizens, but really reinforces the value that this community has stood for for many, many years, and hopefully will continue to stand for. The federal government should be supporting this aid, as the memorial indicates, through funding, not destroying this very well-organized opportunity in Tucson. And to respond to a comment that was made by an earlier speaker, just to clarify, this program has never been, quote, "sanctuary," whatever that means, but these people are, as you all know, individuals who had been released by government agencies to the community for many, many years without any adverse impacts to the community. So I just came tonight to urge that the memorial be passed unanimously and to say how proud I am to live in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dinah.
That a move that we adopt this memorial as mayor and council.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Aye.
Well, he's got to call you.
Sorry.
I'm ready to go.
All right. Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek. Mayor Romero.
Aye. This motion passes by a vote of 7-0.
Thanks for coming down, Dan.
Thank you so much. Item eight.
Public hearing, Alvernon-Broadway Area Plan Amendment, PA 1902, north side of 22nd Street and east of Alvernon Way, to allow commercial, office, and high-density residential. Report from city manager. Hearing Resolution Number 23122.
City manager's communication number 406 dated December 3rd is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this time is and placed legally advertised for a public hearing on amendment to the Alvernon-Broadway Area Plan. This public hearing is scheduled to last no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name to deliver your presentation. Is there anyone that we have scheduled to speak?
We don't have any cards, Your Honor.
All righty. If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23122 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23122 relating to planning and zoning, amending the Alvernon-Broadway Area Plan, PA 1902, north side of 22nd Street, east of the Alvernon-22nd Street intersection, commercial, office, and high-density residential, and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, first of all, to the developer, to Carrie in the group, I appreciate the design change to eliminate the golden arches. That's a positive change. My concern is not the current proposal, but it's entitling other uses later on if this project fails. So Carrie, could you speak to the notion that we're locking in C1? The proposed uses are fine, but how do we ensure that if, say, the Medical Plaza doesn't make it, that a subsequent owner comes in and demos the building and builds an incompatible use for the same site? Describe the public process that would be in place, assuming we change the zoning, and so it would be an entitled use within the zoning category.
Mayor, council members, the action that's in front of you tonight is the plan amendment, which simply changes the ability, it opens up the opportunity to come back in for a rezoning for a commercial. C1 is what we've identified as going to be that rezoning request. So right now, this area is designated in the area plan for low-density residential right along 22nd Street, so this would permit that opportunity. During the rezoning, we're going to have to do a preliminary development plan that's going to start to place those buildings. We've shown an initial site plan. As we do the rezoning, it'll be a little bit more detailed, and we'll be working with the developers, well as the neighbors, on the uses. The very first condition of a rezoning in the city of Tucson is, which will be the future action, is that it needs to be in substantial conformance with that preliminary development plan. So the uses will be C1 uses, which is the lowest-intensity neighborhood commercial. Again, that's not what's in front of you this evening. This opens the door to be able to do that. The request is not for C2 or one of the more, it won't be for one of the more higher-intensity commercials.
So you also have high-density residential.
So the designations, we had to fit in with the existing nomenclature in the Broadway-Alvernon Area Plan, and that area plan, the only way you can combine commercial and office is the category of commercial, office, high-density residential. The intention is not to do high-density residential, which would be difficult to do on 22nd Street anyways. It's also, it's only a 30,000-square-foot site, so it's a portion of one parcel and then two additional parcels that are being consolidated, which is also encouraged by the plan. So it's not a large site to be able to do a high-density residential with the parking that would be required. It really is a commercial, office kind of building. The developer is the same developer that's doing the currently under construction Dutch Brothers Coffee, and so we've talked about shared access in that area. They're not high-density residential developers.
Right, and so we can have the conversation about prohibited uses later on during the rezoning process. So with that, a move that we adopt the item and approve the plan amendment.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Aye.
Ms. Romero.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Resolution Number 23122 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item nine.
Zoning, C91821, Surf Through Incorporated, Old Vale Road, C1 and I2 to I2. Ordinance adoption, report from city manager. Ordinance Number 11714.
City manager's communication number 403 dated December 3rd is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance Number 11714 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11714 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located approximately 300 feet south of Old Vale Road and 400 feet west of Houghton Road, Houghton Town Center Lots Five and Six, and westerly portions of Lot Seven and Eight in case C91821, Surf Through Incorporated, Old Vale Road, C1 and I2 to I2, and setting an effective date.
Oh.
What is the council's pleasure?
I move we adopt ordinance Number 11714.
Second.
There's any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Aye.
Ms. Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Surf Through, welcome to Tucson.
Aye.
Ordinance 11714 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 10.
Zoning, C91902, Break Max, Tankaverty Road, C1 to C2. Ordinance adoption, report from city manager. Ordinance Number 11715.
City manager's communication number 404 dated December 3rd is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance Number 11715 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11715 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located on the north side of Tankaverty Road, approximately 830 feet east of Catalina Highway, in case C91902, Break Max, Tankaverty Road, C1 to C2, and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, I move that we pass and adopt the item.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres.
Aye.
Ordinance Number 11715 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 11.
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, December 17th, at 5:30 p.m. in the mayor and council chambers located at City Hall at 255 West Alameda.